All and welcome to the City Council meeting of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Monday, January 4th, 2021 at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers at 301 South Fifth Street will now come to order. Please join me, please rise for the invocation by the Pastor Frank Chalstak, First Christian Church, and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Again, it's always my pleasure to be here and my honor to come and pray for the City Council members. So will you join me in prayer tonight? Gracious God, we pause tonight to give you thanks for this beautiful day that has went before us and the opportunity to serve you. We thank you for this wonderful place we live in called Southeast Missouri and especially Papa Bluff. We pause tonight to lift up our brothers and sisters in our city, state, nation, and around the world who have been affected by the COVID-19 virus. We pray for those in our city and around the world who have lost loved ones to this virus. We pray for those on the long path of recovery. Tonight, we lift up all the healthcare providers who have put their lives in harm's way in times of our need. We also lift up all those essential workers in our city who have not missed work in very stressful and demanding times. We lift up our local first responders who protect us and help us even risking their own lives for us. Tonight, we thank you for these elected servant citizens who have come together to do the work of the City Council. We thank them for putting service to community over selfish gains. Tonight, as these members of the City Council gather to do the city business, we pray that they will be given discernment and wisdom by your spirit presence to lead our city forward, give them courage to make the hard decisions that will benefit our fair city. We ask these petitions in the one who created the world we live in and gives us abundant life. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson.
Here.
Councilwoman DeGerris.
Here.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilwoman Cornman.
Here.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Would you have a call?
Thank you, Clerk Young. Disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the planned agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Hearing none. Citizens input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the planned agenda. We have Mr. Kevin Ellis. Please state your name and address.
My name is Kevin Ellis. Live at 2067 Tamaa Weet Trail in Papa Bluff, Missouri. I would like to speak to a ongoing project that has been in conversation now for a couple of years or maybe a year. I was looking back through some council notes and videos and noticed that Spencer Jones had began having conversations with the city about Bonn-Luther King Boulevard. And they had mentioned three options at the time, about a year ago. And I've noticed from previous conversations, it has gone from three options down to two. One of the three options that it has dropped off of the conversation was the city would be willing to purchase some of the signs for the Bonn-Luther King Boulevard if we were able to get the City Council to vote it through. Spencer Jones and I have been trying to speak with Mr. Dave Wyman, who's getting us prices on the signs as well. So what I would like to propose to the city is that why don't we do this in combination in a partnership? Would the city consider purchasing or splitting the cost with us as we raise the money to purchase the signs? I'm not sure how that would play in with the city being responsible for any other labor or the maintenance, but I know when I spoke to Dave Wyman, he has said that if we do it through the private means, we raise our own funds, we raise our own money, it's a one-time fee. After the money has been raised and the signs have been purchased, they will take care of everything else from that point. So my option and my proposal was would the city consider partnering with us? The city pay for half, we pay for half, and then turn it over to Department of Transportation to maintain from that point on. As I was counting the street blocks, I think I counted four or five intersections in which we would want signs at the intersections. And one sign on the right side or left side of your road as you're coming into Papa Bluff on Highway 60 that would say something along the line, Bonn-Luther King Memorial Boulevard. We're flexible on the language, we're flexible on working with the city, we're flexible on just moving the program forward. And I think it would be a great idea if the city and private partners could partner to do this. We pay taxes like everyone else. You receive our taxes through sales, sporting events, whatever it is that comes to Papa Bluff, them taxes are paid into the system. And we think it would be a good idea if the city would look to partner with us on making it happen. Now, I'm not sure where we go from this point, how you put the work groups together, if you have a work group to put together, if you sit down behind closed doors away from here and begin to work on that plan. But we would like the city to consider moving in that direction if at all possible. And if not, what are the objectives? What do we have to overcome or what do we need to work on to make it happen? I'm optimistic. I'm always a believer in there is a way to make it happen if you want to make it happen. There can always be a way. So I'm not sure what happens from this point with the City Council, where it moves from here, I have no idea. I'm still trying to learn this process.
If you don't mind, Mayor.
Please.
Kevin and I have spoken a few times. I've also spoken with Mr. Wyman at MODOT and he is working on getting prices together. I think probably the next step in the process is let's get the prices back from Dave and kind of see what that looks like and we'll put something together.
Have you ever bought some signs in the past? Do you have any idea, just ballpark? I don't want you to shoot a fake number out there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a clue. I think the last, as far as I know, the last time that something like this was done was when the ones that are out there on PP where it was Canal Memorial Boulevard, when those were put up, but this was before my time and I don't, I don't know who paid for them or how much they cost or anything. So I haven't, I can't even guess. I'd just be making a number up if I tried to guess.
Okay.
But yeah, we'll.
I'd rather you not do that.
I'm sure they, seven of them would rather not do it too. So yeah, let's get with Davis, I know Dave's working on getting us some figures together and we'll get those figures together and just kind of, you know, it's been a while since it's really been talked about in here, so I, just to kind of, what Kevin and I and Dave Wyman at MODOT have talked about is there's a process where the state legislature would actually designate a section of roadway as a memorial drive. So the street name wouldn't change, the mailing addresses of the businesses wouldn't change, but it would be recognized and designated by the state legislature as a memorial drive. And there would be signs designating it and indicating that being a memorial drive. And like Mr. Ellis said, the first signs would be paid for by whomever. MODOT doesn't really care who pays for them, but it would be paid for by someone. And then once they're paid for and MODOT would put them up since they're on their road right of ways, and then they would maintain them going forward. So it's kind of what Mr. Ellis and Mr. Jones and I had talked about. But we'll get those figures from Mr. Wyman at MODOT.
He said they should be coming within about a week. People out on vacation, Christmas shopping, vaca, yeah, okay. All right, thank you very much for your time and I look forward to working with you on it.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Item seven, workshop items for discussion. Item A, the City Council will consider an amendment to the City Code Section 120.0600B, residency requirements.
Mr. Mayor, you know, this was on the last agenda and I asked for you to table it and bring it back tonight for me to gather some more information and to be honest, I just haven't, I haven't gotten enough information yet to really be able to go a whole lot further. So I would like for, if you wouldn't care to table this, to let me gather some more information, do some more research. There's still, I have a lot of questions about where I stand really on what kind of recommendation I would like to make to you. I am open to any thoughts or suggestions, whether it's tonight or in the future as we move forward, but I really would like some more time to look into some of the issues that this could affect and before we really move any further on it, if that's okay with the majority of you guys.
I would so move that we table, generally table that at this time to give our city manager and maybe department heads more time to get more information they need.
Okay, okay.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item B, the City Council will consider bids for construction and site development of the new one-story, 26,000-square-foot police station building for the city of Papa Bluff at 911 Shelby Road. Mr. Wyman.
I'm just going to move this over here so I can stand close and I can talk and I can, y'all can hear me. So over the last few weeks, we've made some progress on the police department project and I wanted to provide an update for you and kind of where we stand and where we're going and that kind of stuff. So tonight, what I'll talk about is the bidding process, the results of the bids, some due diligence based on those bids, some future remaining steps and considerations. Some of the future contracts will include material testing and some special inspections, FF&amp;E, which is furniture, fixtures and equipment and technology, and then financing. As you all are aware, the bids for the police department were issued on November 16th. A pre-bid meeting was held here at the Coliseum on December 1st. Approximately 30 people that were in attendance. This included some here in person and also online. During the bidding process, while the bids were open, there were four addenda or changes that were issued. Bids were open on December 16th, also here at the Coliseum, and there were seven bids that were received and opened on that day. So based on those seven bids that we received, we reviewed those bids, a couple, a few different areas that we reviewed. The base bid, the number of calendar days that were proposed for their construction schedule, which each bidder was asked to provide. There were nine alternates that were considered in the bids. We checked references and qualifications and we also looked at the subcontractor information. The bidders were required to submit a list of subcontractors they were going to use on their project. We verified those and checked those. So the bid results, the low bidder on the project was Brock Miller Construction. Their base bid was $8,090,350 and they estimated 520 days, 20 calendar days for completion of the project. The next lowest bidder was Zoller Construction. Their bid was $8,330,500. And if you remember in the presentation provided in the past, in the budget for the project, the construction portion of that budget was estimated at $8,346,155. So those two low bidders were, came in below what that budget was expected to be. You can see there the other five bidders that were over what the estimated budget was, Patriot Construction, Robertson Contractors, Wright Construction, Hankins Construction and Butler Construction. You can also see on the very far right-hand column the number of calendar days that each contractor provided for their completion. Based on these bids, we did conduct interviews, myself, Chief Danny Wiley, Deputy Chief Mike McLean, Todd Sweeney from Navigate, Joe Switzer from Navigate and Matt Beesman from Police Facility Design Group. We interviewed the top, the low, excuse me, the three low bidders, Brock Miller, Zoller and Patriot. So as I mentioned, there were nine bid alternates. Kind of looking at those and prioritizing those nine bid alternates, the two that we all felt were the priority were alternate six, which is actually a deduction, and alternate Alternate six was to remove sunshades from the front storefront of the window. This would result, based on Zoller, I'm sorry, based on Brock Miller's bid, this would result in a deduction of $68,920 to remove those sunshades. And then alternate nine was some site work. There was, you can see the lighter gray that's in the red outlines on the very top of the page, which would be the north of the property. There's an exit out of the parking lot towards PP Highway. On the left-hand side of this picture, which would be to the west of the property, there's a drive coming out of the parking lot connecting back to Shelby Road. And then to the front of the building, there's an additional visitor parking lot that would be added. And that resulted in a $111,000 addition. So if you take Brock Miller's low bid of $8,090,350, deduct the alternate six of removing the sunshades for $68,920, and then add in the additional driveways and parking lots, You have a base bid plus the two alternates, which would be a total of $8,133,171, which is still a little over $200,000 lower than what the estimated construction budget was Some of the due diligence processes that we have undertaken since bids were opened, all firms submitted their supplemental bid forms that were required within 24 hours after the bid opening. Key team members of all three of the low bidders participated in the pre-award conference, the interviews that were conducted. The architects, Police Facility Design Group and Navigate have confirmed the proposals included the plans and the specs. They've all provided preliminary schedules, they've all provided references. The approximate percentage of subcontractors that would work on the projects within the 63901 and 63902 ZIP code, for Brock Miller, four out of 30 proposed subcontractors, or 13% of those subcontractors would be local firms. All three firms have experience with 911 call centers and all three firms have committed to sign the draft contract that was included in the bid specifications. Some of the next steps in this process, the City Council to finalize the alternates that would be accepted or rejected by our next meeting. The City Council finalizes the contractor to be awarded the project at our next meeting. And the City Council authorizes the city manager to enter into the contract, with the contractor at that next meeting. Navigate will provide a notice of award, notice to proceed to the contractor and then finalize the contract with the contractor by January 26th. And then finalize the financing closing of $11,611,000 on February 26th. At our first meeting in February, Steve will be here to present the final numbers for the financing packet. Some other future steps is the City Council will approve, there's a material testing and special inspections contract. Additionally, in the future, we'll be bringing back to you contracts for the furniture, fixtures and equipment, for the building enclosure testing, and for the phone technology, audio, video, audio visual, radio dispatch and antenna systems. And that is all I have. So if you have any questions, I'm going to put this back and have a seat. And, yes, sir.
Can you go back on the subcontractors, the local users of the subcontractors, what the percentages were? Try to figure it out.
So Brock Miller was at 13%, Patriot was at 30% and Zoller was at 20%.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Any comment from the audience? The chair will entertain a motion to move this to January 19th voting session.
I make that motion to move that to the January 19th voting session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
I appreciate all the work that you did to get this all together.
Well, it's definitely been a team effort. I appreciate Navigate and Police Facility Design Group and definitely the Police Department Chief, Chief Wiley and Deputy Chief McLean have spent hours along with their staff reviewing all of this and working on this.
There are no action required items tonight. Is there any further business to be brought before the council? If there be, now we'll hear a report from the city map manager.
You know, it's always nice to report good news. I don't know if any of you happen to follow the Chamber of Commerce's Facebook page, but they, the November unemployment numbers were released just right about Christmas time that Steve Halter shared on the Chamber of Commerce Facebook page. For November, the unemployment rate for the United States was 6.7%. For Missouri, the unemployment rate was 4.4%. And for Butler County, our unemployment rate was 4.2%. You know, I think that speaks very strongly to our economy, how well our economy is doing. You know, we have some amazing businesses in town that have just continued to thrive and grow despite the pandemic and the strain that's been put on other areas of our country. You know, I'm grateful to live in Papa Bluff and in Butler County where, you know, we see job growth and we see low unemployment rates. And, you know, you can look on the news, in the newspaper or on Facebook or social media and there's constantly places in Papa Bluff and Butler County hiring and looking for employees. And that's a good thing to really brag about, you know, how strong our local economy is and how vibrant our business community is and how our industrial base is so strong and our retail base is so strong that we've really, it's a, we're in a, we live in a very good place to be and it's good that we have these opportunities available for our citizens to have jobs and to work and contribute. So the next piece of good information I have, I'd like to ask Officer Torres, if you would mind to come up front, please, and James Sisk and Greg Smith.
You know, the new year starts off with some new beginnings for some folks. You know, these three folks here, I'd like to just take a minute to introduce. James Sisk, James has been with the city for 24 years, serving as code enforcement officer, and today was his first official day as city planner. I'm excited for James, the experience that he brings, his knowledge of codes and ordinances of the city. I think James is going to do a great job for us and I look forward to working with James as he takes on this new role and excited for James and, you know, there's definitely been areas in the planning department that have been not given the kind of attention they needed to be given since Mark retired and I was moved into this position. And so I'm excited to have James step up and take on that responsibility. Congratulations, James, I appreciate it. Just wanted to take a minute for y'all to all meet James and know who you'll be dealing with. I know that as city planner, he's going to get to spend a lot of evenings here with us presenting. So it'll be good for you to see his face and get to know James. He's going to do a great job.
You're just getting yourself off the hook, huh?
I'd also like to introduce our newest police officer, Officer Selena Torres. Selena comes to us from the way of Campbell, Missouri. We're excited to have Selena join our police force and we look forward to the contribution that she's going to make to our community going forward. Thank you, Selena, we appreciate your service. And lastly, Greg Smith. Some of you, I'm sure, recognize Greg. Greg's been around the Coliseum since, before it even opened. Some of you may know, some of you may not know, Bobby Godwin has accepted a job as the golf operations manager for the Parks Department. He is moving on to manage the golf course and that operation full-time. And so to take Bobby's place, Greg has stepped up and is going to take on the role of being the director here at the Coliseum. I appreciate Greg. Greg knows this place inside and out. You know, he's dedicated to how smoothly this place runs and how efficiently it runs. And, you know, we've had a hard year at the Coliseum. We've had a lot of events canceled and we're looking forward to great things in 2021 and events coming back and Greg's stepping up to take on that challenge and meet it head on. I'm excited for Greg and looking forward to what he's going to do for us here at the Coliseum. I just wanted to introduce him and recognize him tonight, too. So guys, I appreciate it. You know, you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, sir.
And I just have a brief comment for the Papa Bluff Police Department. Thank you for doing what you do and just recently, job well done. Thank you, Chief Whiteley and your team. Thank you. So if there be nothing further, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.